Hey, everyone. We're excited to be joined by the Kendall County Democrats for a virtual Q and A session with our SBOE nominee, District 5 nominee Rebecca Bell-Mettero. My name is Stephen Apadaka, and I lead Digital and Media Communications for Rebecca. In my day job, I'm a management consultant, and I focus on company transformation as well as adult learning and upskilling. And I can tell you, I'm personally very excited about this race. We certainly have an opportunity to have a candidate in our district who's committed to educating students on the skills that will be important for their future success. With that, I'll turn it over to our operational manager for the campaign, David D'Angelo. Go ahead.
Thanks, Stephen. And just like you said, we've got a great candidate in Rebecca, who has the experience, the wisdom, and the passion to lead the SBOE into the next decade. And this is definitely a winnable race that Democrats should be really excited about. In 2016, Hillary Clinton carried this district by 0.2%. In 2018, Beto O'Rourke carried it by 10.5%. And given the trends in demographics and national environment, it's safe to say this is a lean Democratic district. And as it's an open seat, and we've got the better candidate and the passion behind us, I think it's important that we all get out there and help Rebecca get over the finish line so in the years to come, she can steer education policy in the right direction for Texas. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to one of our Kendall County co-hosts, Leah, for a further introduction.
Hi, my name is Leah Rosenberger. I'm 20 years old, and I live in Burnie, Texas. I attend the University of Texas as Austin. I'm a junior, and I'm an English major at Austin. I am a recent graduate, so all of Rebecca's initiatives have really moved me to pay attention to our State Board of Education in Texas, and I really think that she's going to change our education system for the better. So I'd like to introduce my co-host, Erin, also from the Kendall County.
Hi, yeah, I'm Erin. I'm the Social Media Chair for the Kendall County Democratic Party, and we're just so excited to be talking to Rebecca tonight. We want to prepare our voters in our county and across the district in the state to know who's going to be on their ballot in November and just be ready to vote up and down the ballot. And we want to thank her for, you know, being our guinea pig, and this is our first time doing an interview like this. And so, thank you to Rebecca and her team. And I would like to introduce her now. She is our nominee for the State Board of Education, Professor Rebecca Bell-Mettero.
Hi, everybody. I'm Rebecca Bell-Mettero. I teach at Texas State University, and I wanted to thank Stephen, and David, and Erin, and Leah, and also Kevin Henning, who hasn't appeared here, but he was kind of one of the masterminds of this as well. And we've been preparing for this, believe it or not. It has this kind of cutting-edge, live feel to it, and it is live. But we also want to be sure that we make it so everybody knows what State Board of Education does. And this is, you know, if people will confuse State Board of Education with their local school board, and they'll say, oh, you're running for school board. And I feel like, you know, the teacher that I am, when I say, no, it's not school board, it's State Board of Education, and that makes a big difference because this is 13 counties. And I think that, you know, in a way, having the COVID virus has made it so that I'm not driving all over the 13 counties. And you can see there the range, all the way from San Saba in the north to Bear there in the south, Caldwell over in the east, and then Kerr County over in the west. And it looks pretty red on that map, but if you look at the concentration of the blue parts there, there's a lot of population there. And you can see that Beto O'Rourke won by 54.8% over Cruz in 2018. So that shows that this is winnable. I am not as charming and charismatic as Beto, but this shows that the votes are there. And so, we have, you know, Beto is helping to get out the vote, everybody is helping to get out the vote, and that's what we need. So we figured out a strategy, and this really comes from David, that we're going to engage all 13 counties because we can do it virtually. We can Zoom. And of course, we're going to use social media, and we're still working on that. We're still kind of fine-tuning it because we have a very, you know, kind of a slim budget. And, you know, I must say that my opponent has a, you know, a more healthy budget that comes from family resources. So I'm getting it all from asking people like you to contribute. You know, no gift is too small. We need every bit of help we can get. We're also partnering with other campaigns, and that is important because we're going to, I get to even speak with Lloyd Doggett and Wendy Davis, and I'll put out word about that in the future. So I only have my little five minutes, but that's going to be great to be able to be on the stage with those great people who are really doing a lot. And I'm going to be joining the campaign, the coordinated campaign in Travis County, which is enormous. They ask me to contribute money to them to be able to participate, and it's worth every So I'm, let's go back to the previous slide. Can you do that, Stephen? Because I think there are a couple of points there. And the final one is that we're going to recruit new voters. So all these new people who've been moving in to the corridor there, they tend to be a little bit younger, more people of color, better educated, more likely to vote for Democrats. And then we have all these people who are turning 18, and we have all these people who have gotten woke. So we know that if there's a reason to vote, they'll vote. But this is a down ballot. I mean, it's, you know, about in the middle of the ballot. It's going to be a big, long ballot. You won't be able to vote, straight ticket. But if you look for that hyphenated name, Bell-Mettero, just think, it's probably the most complicated name on the ballot. Look for it in about the middle, and, you know, you can go for that. So let's go ahead to the next slide. All right. So the future of education, that's kind of the theme of this, and we have to really talk to that point for everybody that we talk to. Tell them, we need a 21st century education. State Board of Education has been way back in the past, and this Republican-dominated SBOE, 15 members, 10 of them are Republicans. They don't like science, they don't believe in climate change, they don't want to have comprehensive sex education, they don't mention certain parts of history, they don't mention the contributions of Mexican-Americans and Native Americans nearly enough, and all of the other people that have contributed to our culture here in Texas and in the United States. So we want to be sure that we have an up-to-date curriculum, so we're teaching them new skills. We're teaching them coding and civil discourse and vocational skills that are new. And we want to also make sure we give them real history and real science and get them excited about education. So on the real science, real history, and real skills, we have global warming going on. Right now, we're all thinking about COVID. That's the only thing on our radar for most of us, but we're going to be seeing more and more disasters. We've gotten kind of used to this new normal. It used to be that it was very unusual, even in Texas, to have temperatures over 100. But now, we go like, yeah, 30, 35 in a year, no big deal. That is not normal. And we've had more climate change now than we've ever had in the history of the planet in such a short period. So we have changing demographics, we have a younger and more multicultural population, and we have to adapt to that. We want our children to be safe, we want to use science to figure out how to get them educated, we want them to be adaptable and resilient, because we've got to be resilient. We've got to be ready to change. And we want them to be well-educated for the future, not some kind of past that people think, oh, this is the way things used to be. They were probably never that way, but we plan to give them a full and well-rounded And so to do that, I'm listening a lot to parents, teachers, and students. And I was on a Zoom with some people for, it was just the League of Women Voters, which is not partisan in any way, but they were a group of young people from Texas State who were talking about what it is that young people want. And one of the things they said is, you need to be concise. We like things at bullet points, and we also want to, we want to care and be excited about our candidates. We don't want to vote if it's somebody we don't think is really going to be a good leader. So I am very passionate about education, about the environment, and about issues that I know from teaching my students, a lot of young people care about. And, you know, teaching every year, it kind of keeps me up on what's going on in the world. And so, I'm a little bit younger in my heart than I may look. So new environments, we're changing how people live and learn and work, and I don't think we're ever going to go back to the way we used to do things. We'll find a kind of hybrid. There'll be a lot of online education and online work, too, because they've discovered that people actually are more efficient working from home. You know, they get more work done, they're more productive. In-person or face-to-face, that's the F2F on there, and hybrid. And I think we need to figure out a way to alternate hybrid and in-person in class because that would help us manage flare-ups of the virus. If you were off for two weeks and you were learning at home, that'd give you a while to see if you caught anything while you were in the classroom, and that's important. So we have to have a vision for the future of the State Board of Education. We're going to have a lot to handle, and we're going to have to address all of these issues.
Alrighty. I guess we can start jumping into some questions. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. So, you know, what kind of decisions does the State Board of Education make? You know, what are they deciding on for our students? And is there any, like, budgeting involved as well in the State Board of Education?
They make a lot of decisions. They supervise the Permanent School Fund, which varies in its value according to the stock market and every, you know, so sometimes it's 40,000, sometimes it's down, but that's 40 billion, I mean, small difference. But this is a budget that has a lot of money in it, and a lot of those revenues come from oil and gas, which is one of the reasons that a lot of the people in the state are so resistant to renewables. But I think that we, as an education system, have to help them learn the problems of fossil fuels and transition in a reasonable way so that we're shifting to renewable clean energy. They also determine all the curriculum, all the texts, and we'll be transitioning to e-texts. And we have to make sure that people out in the countryside have access to the web. And so, we need a digital new deal to help everybody all across Texas get access so they can get their information, their students can get their information online. They approve charter schools, both new charters, and they oversee charters that already exist. And they determine the qualifications for graduation. And so, really, it's an enormous amount of responsibility that they have. And in Texas, we always have to be on the lookout for people who are trying to make money off of education. Education should be an investment in the future, not a way for people to make money by high-stakes testing or textbooks that aren't accurate and up-to-date. So we have to watch our budget, and I am very conservative about spending money on things that are not teaching our kids. I think we should be generous about the money we spend on teacher salaries and having good class size. Those aren't things that the SBOE decides, but we can have a big voice, the old bully pulpit of saying, this is what we need to have a good, effective education system.
Right, yeah. And you mentioned testing a little bit, so what are your thoughts on standardized testing?
I think standardized testing, these high-stakes tests are a very bad idea. And the STAR test, every iteration of them has been a bad idea because there's no longitudinal data. It changes every few years, so we can't compare how we are now to how we were 10 or 15 years ago. That's ridiculous. The other thing is, we don't have any comparative data with other states. If we just use the Iowa Skills Test, not even every year, I mean, they say, oh, it's expensive, but if we use that test, that's made up by experts. Teach to that test. It's not a test that you can have teachers punished for their scores. And that's what's going on in Texas now. And so, this is a big change, but we're seeing a lot of big changes, and I think now is the time to do it and say, you know, those people are going to have to make their money some other way. We can't teach to the test, and we can't have everybody spending so many class days preparing for this test. It's not good assessment. Doesn't mean we throw out assessment, but teachers can create their own small assessment.
All right. So, you know, what is your background? What's your career? What led you to, you know, be so passionate about education?
Oh, well, I go way back when I was a kid. I was in 4H, and I did this, there were dad contests for how to tell how to do something, and I explained how to do a special kind of buttonhole. And my mom was at this contest, and I won, and I got like the state, I was state winner. And my mom said, you know, you would be a good teacher. And I think that stuck in my head. But then, you know, I went to school at Indiana University, and we ended up, my husband and I got married and went to the Peace Corps in Chad, which is one of the 10 poorest countries in the world. And they taught us how to teach English as a second language and English literature. And so, we did that for two years, and it was a great experience, but I had to be able to teach with nothing. You know, we had chalkboards to write the texts on, and it was an amazing experience. Then, you know, I came back to graduate school and got my doctorate and wrote a dissertation in film and wrote a book called Hollywood Androgyny about sexual reversals. And that's something that will no doubt come up in the campaign, and it's come up in past campaigns, like, what is it about her? So I've done a lot of training for teachers in Texas on all kinds of subjects, and it's been very exciting because teachers want to engage their students. And when you use movies and film media, you engage students, and you get them thinking, and they start reading. And so, I think education is the answer to just about everything.
Very cool. You mentioned, you know, on the ballot, just look for the long hyphenated name. So who is going to be your opponent on that ballot? And what do they stand for? Or, you know, what do you stand for that they don't stand for?
Lenny Pop is the person who won the runoff against Robert Morrow. She was in a runoff, and she did well against Robert Morrow. He was once the Republican County Chair, but he was out of favor then. And so, she is, I think, a very nice person. I think she's a speech therapist, and I do not think that her understanding of science is solid. And when I first began looking at her website, I saw a lot of things that expressed her religious beliefs, and everyone should have, you know, a right to have whatever religious beliefs they want. But there is a separation of church and state in the United States. It's written into our whole structure of our government. And so, I think that's one area where there might be a difference. And I also think that I have an idea about actually trying to tell students the truth, tell them the facts, and then they can decide for themselves what their own value systems are. We are not there to dictate value systems, we're there to get the best possible research and information to students.
Awesome. Okay, well, Leah is now going to talk more about, you know, subject matter and curriculum as she more recently, you know, graduated from high school and is now in college. So I'll pass it over to Leah.
Thank you, Erin. Yeah, so I've had a lot of experience in the public education system. High school's more recent, but even looking back throughout school, there's been a lot of gaps in education, which I think my classmates and recent graduates would agree with. So to start, I guess, you would definitely relate to this as an English professor, but as an English major, I've, it's really shocking how underrepresented authors of color were in high school and even further back readings. So I was wondering what would be your plans to change this and promote more diverse voices in the curriculum?
Well, I would, first of all, I would point out that Texas is unusual in this regard compared to some other states. And when I was a senior in high school and taking classes from a guy who had just graduated from Valparaiso University, we read Crisis in Black and White, we read Ralph Ellison, we read all kinds of authors from different cultural backgrounds because he was trying to prepare us for, you know, the real world. And I think Texas has kind of stayed back, you know, before that guy graduated, you know, it's trying to stay back in something like, you know, I call the happy white 1950s or something. And so, that's an element of the curriculum that I would like to see changed, and they're starting to do that. I have to hand it to them, they've got an ethnic studies course, so that took a long, it was a long time in coming. But they're just still kind of making baby steps in that direction. There are other areas where they're severely lacking in. I don't know if you want to broach the three-word word.
I, well, I think, I know that you're very involved in the sex education changes, and I know that that's coming up in the TEACs adoption cycle, which is kind of complicated. I printed it all out to look at, but it's crazy that, I mean, everyone should look up the TEACs adoption cycle. But what would be your plans for a more comprehensive sex education and any specific plans?
Well, basically, I testified for the board, and if you go to my website, there's my little story of how I tried to testify and then turned out that, you know, there was kind of a mix-up. But I did end up getting to speak to the board. And one of the things that was a controversy that they're looking at is, should we have comprehensive sex education or the old version? And it used to be that they had abstinence only, in other words, your sex education was just, don't do it.
Worth the wait.
Yeah, right, worth the wait, yeah. And the, I actually had a class that did a video for Worth the Wait, and it was a video production class, and they had asked us to do a video, and they wanted us to talk to students who had, were teen parents. So we got some footage from there and from some doctors talking about STDs. And then, my students wanted to put in one little thing about putting a condom on a banana. And there was one person in our local school board area who did not like that, and he said, you got to cut that out, or we're not, you know, it's not going to fly. And I was really tormented by that because I thought, that's one, you know, it's funny, it's a good piece of information. And, but we ended up cutting it out, and, you know, basically, the message was just, you know, don't get pregnant. It gave good information about STDs and things like that. But comprehensive sex education looks at a lot more. I mean, it looks at the full range of humanity. It looks at LGBTQ students, it looks at the ideas of consent and ideas of, you know, how to say no, and how to actually think about when you want to have sex, why do you want to have sex, all of those issues. And students can explore for themselves. They're not being dictated to, you know, to saying, well, this is the rule you need to follow. But they're being presented the full range of information, and that's what I advise because students are smarter than a lot of parents think they are, and they're going to be able to get all kinds of information, a lot of it not, you know, not very accurate or reasonable, online. So we should be giving that to them in the schools. A lot of parents aren't really comfortable talking about sex with their kids. I mean, my kids hate it if I talk about sex to them. Makes them nervous. So, you know, a teacher in a class can just present it, it's no big deal. These are the names for things. This is, you know, this is, these are the facts.
Yeah, and I agree. You definitely like, that's one of the points that I see from the transition to public education to the university system. All the subjects are lacking, but especially when you go to school and you're being passed out condoms on the street, and you're like, oh, they didn't let us look at those in high school.
What is this?
Very different. Very important to know. But also, going with the incompleteness, it's a nationwide conversation right now, and the history curriculum is really important to address and to look back on, in particular, how stories of people of color and racism in Texas have been kind of brushed to the side, especially in my years, and how this relates to problems that Americans are protesting across America. So in your position on the State Board, how would you propose to address these shortcomings?
I would propose putting information into the curriculum so that it's all knit together so that when they take their history, that they see the real effects and the real ways that African-Americans have been oppressed and excluded from the system, from this financial system. We should have classes that explain to students how the financial system works because it's designed to exclude a lot of people. And, you know, once people realize that, they start saying, hey, you know, we want a piece of this pie. And in literature, we have to have stories that come from a variety of people. And that doesn't mean that we get rid of the classics, but it means that we start bringing new classics and that we bring new voices in all the time. So it's exciting. People like to hear stories about people like themselves. And so, you know, if all of the stories you read are about men, you know, the female students are kind of going, well, yeah, it's interesting, but they don't see themselves in it. The same with the students of color or LGBTQ students, that everybody needs to be represented in the curriculum. And the students need to have a choice in what they write about. You can't cover every single thing, but you need to welcome all these different points of view.
Yeah, I think that's great. Also, we talked about earlier, you have a lot of interest in the environment and climate change and bringing that to Texas public education. And I think especially right now, like, it all kind of intertwines because this pandemic has really revealed this decidedly anti-science or pseudoscience undercurrent in the discourse around the nation. So I was wondering how you could plan to address this through the science curriculum and what you already have kind of promoted in your initiatives, yeah?
Teaching about climate change and global warming takes a multi-pronged approach because some people, if they're interested in math, they can look at the data in the math and see amazing things, and they can look at a chart to see how our climate has warmed like this, you know, the old ski curve there. And if you teach them geology and show them that, yes, we've had other periods of global warming, but they didn't occur within the range of 150 years, they wiped out whole species. We want to try to do something that will prevent that from happening. We've already lost so many species on the planet, and it hurts all of us. So if you're looking at that in biology, then you can look at the different species. You can also look at, from chemistry, every student should learn what heat-trapping gases are and say, oh, if you pour a bunch more of those into the atmosphere, it's going to get warmer. And so, they need to learn that it's not just carbon dioxide, it's methane. It's even the things that we use to give scents to our laundry detergent, our shampoo, all of these different things, those are heat-trapping gases unless they're just, you know, naturally occurring oils. They trap gases that are heat-trapping, they're heat-trapping gases. So if you think, all right, we can talk about the history, the sociology, the biology, the science of it, and then we can also just kind of take a hands-on learning and have students going out and testing water and saying, oh, you know, what's happening with our water quality, what's happening with our air quality? So they can also read stories and look at movies to see how those elements are depicted in film.
Good idea. But, yeah, I agree. So again, I guess back to the pandemic, what would you say are the biggest challenges that are being faced in Texas public education specifically due to the pandemic, and how are you working to fix them right now?
Wow, that's a, that's a big question. I'm on the faculty senate, and ordinarily, we only meet once a month during the summer, but we have been meeting practically every week because faculty are really worried about having face-to-face classes. When they look at the data and see the, our infection rates are unmanageable, they're out of control right now. And so, I think we have to take a scientific approach, and we also have When they look at the data and see our infection rates are unmanageable, they're out of control right now. And so I think we have to take a scientific approach, and we also have to figure out what has worked in other countries. We act as if there's nobody else in the world facing this problem. We act as if this didn't occur back in 1918 with the Spanish Flu. They started wearing masks, and that was one of the things that helped control that flu at that time. So we need to learn from other examples. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I think that if we figure out the best way to manage re-entry and not just do it all at once, and that's kind of how our Texas economy has been, we'll just open up everything all at once, and suddenly infection rates soar, and everybody goes, oh, how'd that happen? We weren't wearing masks, we weren't observing social distancing, and we just opened everything, and everybody went wild. That's not the best method. So I think when we start going back into education, we probably have to set up classes, dividing them into two groups so that they're small. So they're about 10, 11 students. And that we alternate every two weeks between in-face, you know, face-to-face in classes and online classes. And that way, we'd be able to see, it's about a two-week period for infection to occur. So when the people who've been face-to-face go out for two weeks, then you say, you know, if you start having fever, or, you know, ideally, we would be tested if we could get the tests that a lot of other countries have. We could do testing before they came back into the in-class setting. But we could flip-flop the classes, so people would be zooming, watching the in-class people, and participating through chat, and then flip those groups the next two weeks. That's my proposal for when we go back in. But we need to get our numbers down. We need to get it so it's safe for people to go back into classrooms and have a very clear protocol.
Very good. I think the last thing that I have, kind of on the same lines, is that, as you know, and as we're seeing, Texas schools and everything has had to make very rapid and dramatic changes to our lifestyles and how we're responding to the pandemic and like this new normal, as you put it. So are there things that we're learning right now and in the upcoming school year that you think we can apply into improving the future of Texas education, even post-pandemic?
Well, we're learning some of the inequalities that we have of people not having access to the web, of people not having, you know, there's such an income gap, and not everybody has the computers. So we're gonna have to invest in those things. And it is an investment, it's not an expense, it's something that we'll gain back. But we can, we can address this, this whole situation if we just think about what actually works. And so it means that we need more education for our teachers. I did a two-week class where I learned how to do online education. I learned so much. I took another, I took a Zoom class for, you know, two hours and learned all of the things that Zoom can do. And, you know, we are gonna have to train our teachers and our students because not everybody knows how to do all of these things. So we're all gonna be learning together. So training, education, and lifelong education.
That sounds great. Well, thank you so much for answering my questions, and Erin's too.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we want to just check, yeah, let's just check in with David and see if we have any questions from, from Facebook that may have come in.
So far, a lot of views, but not a lot of questions.
Okay, you know, I told my husband to ask a question. I don't know if he is, if he watched. He's in another room. He said, well, how do I ask a question? And I said, you go to the chat and ask a question. So, well, we will be putting this, recording of this up online. So we hope that we get some more views from this. And next time, well, next time we have this kind of event, well, we'll try to make sure that we've got some people, you know, what do you call them, shills, stooges, to put in some good questions. Okay, so, yeah. But I do see that, what is, what's this? I was just getting another message on my phone. So any, any last words? Richard, do you have any ideas or questions about anything that's gone on here? Richard?
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yep.
You know, I, I think, as far as the campaign, are you gonna try to debate this poppy? And it would seem to me, because of being able to do it online, this scheduling excuse that they always come up with shouldn't be an excuse.
That's where you come in. Every single club in every single county needs to send an invitation to her saying, we will arrange a Zoom debate at your convenience, and I will make sure that I'm there. And, you know, just like the League of Women Voters have debates that are fair and not biased in any way. I think every county club needs to have an arrangement. They could reach out to the Republican clubs and say, hey, let's have, let's coordinate to have a debate, you know? And then both sides could put in questions. I mean, there's a lot of room for creativity here. And you're right, there's no excuse because there's a lot of hours in the day, and we can Zoom, and people won't have to drive and do all of that to these 13 counties. So that's a great, a great question. And, you know, I think that you learn a lot from people when they just get a question, they don't know what it's gonna be, and they, they need to respond. And I know a lot about education. I don't mean to brag, but I've been teaching for a long time, and I've been thinking about education, really, ever since I was that little girl that was in the demonstration contest, you know? So thanks for your question, Richard. Stephen, you think of anything we've neglected?
I don't, I don't think so. I think we've, if the Kendall County Democrats don't have any other questions, I think we can...
This is Luke. I just wanted to say I appreciate y'all taking the time. And this is really valuable. One thing that I kind of understood that I hadn't considered before is, you know, I realized that you have a, you know, your term, that, again, Leah was talking about the TEES adoption schedule and how it stretches over, you know, whatever, 12 years. And I wondered, you know, what can you do within the space of a four-year term to influence some of that? But I appreciate your thoughts about, that you were saying about actually the integration of the different curriculum areas and how, you know, we can actually change some of how we think about science or some of how we think about history, even through the way we think about other subjects. So that was, that was really valuable, I appreciate that.
Well, I've gotten that from research. They've done a lot of research to show that people learn better if you present the information through different avenues. Because everybody has different talents, and they may not understand the literary story about something, but they really get the math, or they really get the science. And so if you can reinforce learning in those different ways, and some people, it's just hands-on. You know, when they get busy and, and, you know, dig for bugs and say, how many bugs are in this square footage? They get the idea. So that's, it's not original to me, but I appreciate you bringing that up because that's something that SBOE needs to tackle. And they need to look at those connections among the different subjects.
Hey Rebecca, this is Kevin. And you were fantastic, as were Erin and Leah. This has been really super. I'm always, you know, impressed. I've heard you speak a number of times and tell lots of stories about your battles in the past. And I want you to know, I think you can do it if we all pitch in and help you do it. But I did, I had one kind of technical question, and that's about the managing of the finances. And who actually does that?
For my campaign?
Well, no, no, for, for...
Oh, for the Permanent School Fund?
Right, Permanent School Fund.
Well, they have a group of financial managers. And so the financial managers, you know, they're, they're experts and specialists. I mean, Stephen can tell you about that kind of work. They figure out how to make the most out of investments that people have. And so they're running that end of it. But the, the State Board of Education could say, I'd like to see us, you know, do some more investments in renewable energies, or I'd like to see us do, you know, kind of have a different sort of balance. And there are people, I would not be one of those people who would be making specific financial suggestions because that's not my field. But I would listen to people who do care about the environment and financial ethics because that's something that we need to make sure that nobody on the board has any financial conflicts of interest. And we also have to make sure that, that we have a balance, you know, that you, you have a variety in your investments, but that we start moving our investments over into where we want to see the total portfolio go eventually. And, you know, that's something that I would leave to the financial experts. I know, you know, my retirement account is handled by a bunch of people who know what they're doing, and I meet with them twice a year, and they explain to me, and I go, hmm, you know? But, but it is something that the board can express their views on. And so there isn't, you know, you can also talk about whether you want to be more or less conservative in your investments. And, you know, setting that balance and, you know, rebalancing investments is very important as well. But we have to get the best advisors, too. So we have to be sure that it's not, you know, one hand washing another hand. And I certainly don't have any dog in the hunt, as they say. So I'm, I can be pretty, you know, fair, I think, in my decisions.
We, I think back to 2016, and you came and spoke to the Kendall County Women's Club. My wife Sandy, who's sitting here, and we do have a dog who's right here, too, but...
The dog's not showing up, he's not showing up.
He's pretty cute. And, and you gave a fantastic speech to the club. And at that moment in time, I knew you're the right person for the job. And we've been hoping, and I was so pleased when you decided to run again. That's, that's fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you know, it takes persistence, and I think this is our year to win. And it's a year to win big and to make a big difference. I am so excited about it. And I just keep on working, keep steady, but I'm very excited about it. I don't want us to take anything for granted. We don't want to just win, we want to win big. And it's gonna be a win for all of Texas. They might not know it, but it will be.
It will be. And, you know, I did drop off for a while, and I went to watch on Facebook.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
There's some people watching on Facebook, which is really...
That's good, that's what we want.
But, and so that, that's great. And I think, you know, you got, everybody did a fantastic job, thank you so much.
Well, I want to thank everybody once again, and you, Kevin, for, you know, this brainchild, and Leah, and Stephen, Luke, and where's Erin? I don't see her on my, she's...
I'm over here.
Oh, she's over there, yeah. Well, thank you so much. And I'm, I think that's it. I think we're ready to say goodbye. Richard, thanks for dropping in, David, and...
Do it again.
And Becky, Becky, there's Becky.
Enjoyed it.
Thank you, Becky.
What you said, liked a bit of it, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca, for joining us, and it's been a really good conversation.
Oh, thanks. And we'll do this again, you know, we'll do this again, now that we know what we're doing.